I'd like to call Onslow County Board of Commissioners a meeting for this November 21st meeting. First order of business is the invocation by our county manager, Ms. Sharon Griffin, if you'll lead us in that.
Thank you Chairman Bright and Commissioners, and good evening. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. As we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, we thank you for the gift of life and for all of those you've brought into our lives. For those who will be traveling to be with family and friends, we ask that you grant them a safe journey. Lord, please be with our first responders and bless those defending our nation. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Ms. Sharon Slater will lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the elected officials with us here tonight. Sheriff Miller, it's been a long eight years. You've been to every meeting as our sheriff for Onslow County Sheriff's Office. And also Sheriff-elect Chris Thomas is here. And Amiga Jarman, our Commissioner Deeds is here. Thank you all for being here. And I think that's all of our elected officials. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the board has control of. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda, which is at the end of the meeting. With no other items to be considered, I would like a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any one of the commissioners would like to have removed for later discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now at item three. Ms. Griffin, has anyone signed up for a public comment?
Yes, sir. Chairman Bright, we have one citizen who has signed up for our public comment period this evening. I would remind the audience that public speakers have exactly five minutes in which to deliver their comments. We do ask that everyone maintain professional decorum. It is not permissible to share your time with anyone in the audience or to speak with members of the audience, and we do ask that you address the board as a whole when you come up to speak. I will now welcome Ms. Suzanne Livingston of 146 Shell Bank Drive in Sneets Ferry. And ma'am, if you would please repeat your name and your address for us when you get to the microphone, we would appreciate that.
My name is Suzanne Livingston. I live at 146 Shell Bank Drive in Sneets Ferry, North Carolina. I am here basically to thank all the commissioners, Sharon Griffin, and especially Sherri Slater, for helping us get the Blue Star, Gold Star memorials on your consent agenda, and thanking you very much for approving that. So I'm not even going to use whole five minutes. I just wanted to let you know that we are truly happy about this. Thank you very much. And you'll all be getting fundraiser stuff soon. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Livingston. We appreciate that so much. That's all we have for tonight's public comment period, Commissioner.
Okay, we have on item four presentations, and I will turn that over to you for presentations for the proclamations.
Thank you Chairman Bright and Commissioners. This evening we have three proclamations. Our first one is in recognition of our veterans. I will read it into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, Veterans Recognition Month 2022. Whereas on Veterans Day, America pauses to honor every service member who has ever worn one of our nation's uniforms. Each time our country has come under attack, they have risen in her defense. Each time our freedoms have come under assault, they have responded with resolve. And whereas as we pay tribute to our veterans, we are mindful that no ceremony or parade can fully repay that debt. We remember that our obligations endure long after the battle ends, and we make it our mission to give them the respect and the care that they have earned. And whereas under the most demanding of circumstances and in the most dangerous corners of the earth, Americans veterans have served with distinction. And whereas on Veterans Day and every day, we celebrate their immeasurable contributions, draw inspiration from their example, and renew our commitment to showing them the fullest support of a grateful nation. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares November as Veterans Recognition Month in Onslow County and encourages all citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate public or private ceremonies and gestures presented the 21st day of November 2022 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Our representatives from Onslow County Councils of Veterans Organizations will accept the proclamation, and Chairman Bright has requested that Commissioner Buchanan, who is also a veteran, present this proclamation.
This is a privilege and an honor for me, being a Vietnam vet. And one of the things I always talk about our Vietnam vets to all of us that are Vietnam vets, for our sisters and our brothers, welcome home. And you hear me say that a lot when I go to the Vetra Memorial. And these veterans do so much for Onslow County. They do a lot. And there's several of them here I know personally. I know the grants in behind me, there's Paul, and there's several of the others over here, people that I know very well. It's an honor for these people to get this proclamation, but they deserve more.
Thank you very much, sir.
On behalf of the Council of Veterans Organizations and the individual units that have showed up here today, I'd like to thank you very much. We really do appreciate when you show us a little bit. We're working hard, take care of each other, take care of other vets, and anytime you could help out with that, come see us. Thank you. Bye.
Our next proclamation is in recognition of National Adoption Awareness Month 2022. I will read it into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, National Adoption Awareness Month 2022. Whereas during National Adoption Awareness Month, we seek to increase awareness of adoption issues and bring attention to the need for adoptive families for children, youth, and teens in the foster care system. And whereas this year's National Adoption Month theme is Small Steps, Open Doors. Pursuing permanency for teens can be challenging, but small steps along the way can make all the difference. And whereas youth leaving foster care without being adopted or without permanent connections face ongoing challenges with employment, education, and mental health, as well as have an increased risk of homelessness and human trafficking. And whereas every child in Onslow County, regardless of physical, medical, or emotional challenges, age, race, or sexual orientation, needs love, support, security, and a permanent place to call home. And whereas during Adoption Awareness Month, we celebrate all the families who have opened their homes to children through adoption, including the 11 children and youth adopted from foster care last year in Onslow County, and two of those being teenagers. And whereas the Onslow County Department of Social Services is committed to supporting children, youth, and teens in foster care waiting for adoption and supporting adopting families through education, services, and support. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners recognizes November 2022 as National Adoption Awareness Month and urges all residents to support our children, youth, and teens in any way that they are able, by opening their hearts and homes through adoption, becoming foster parents, or by supporting adoptive and foster parents in our community. Presented this 21st day of November 2022 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, representatives from the Onslow County Department of Social Services, and specifically, it looks like some folks from our permanency unit are going to accept, and Chairman Bright has requested that Commissioner Price present this proclamation.
It takes a tremendous amount of heart, love, and commitment to open up yourself, and not just yourself, but it's a commitment from the entire family to bring in a child and make him a part of your home. And so I just want to personally just to thank those 11 families that adopted kids this past year, who opened up their home to give of themselves to others. And we just thank you for what your staff is doing to try to find these families who are willing to adopt, and the foster care families that decide to adopt. We appreciate what you've done to help those kids that need a home. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners for recognizing November as National Adoption Awareness Month. I have with me this evening Susan Sanderson, our Deputy Director over our Social Work Services, Mrs. Matthew, our Permanency Planning Social Work Program Manager, DeShalau Pierre, one of our permanency planning supervisors, who also oversees all of our adoption cases, and then two of our social workers, Joy McCollum and Chelsea Gunnell. Pierre, did you want to say a few words?
On behalf of the agency, I'd like to thank the Commissioners. I'd like to thank the Chairman, Ms. Griffin, Ms. Slater, for bestowing us with this award. It's a thankless job that we have. We don't get praises for it. It's long hours. It's high turnover, high stress. And I'd like to thank my two young ladies, Chelsea and Joy, for all the hard work that they've done. These two young women came in here with less than a year's experience last year, and they've been dedicated. They've worked long hours. They've asked questions when needed to. They've questioned things when they needed to. They've challenged just to make sure that permanence is reached for our children, and today marks for this year that we've accomplished nine adoptions. So it's a great thing when you have employees that are that dedicated and you have no choice but to succeed because they raise the bar. So I'd like to thank them for all that they do, and thank you guys for this award.
Our final presentation this evening is for National Impaired Driving Prevention Month. I will read it into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, National Impaired Driving Prevention Month 2022. Whereas every year, thousands of lives are needlessly lost on our nation's roadways because of alcohol and drug impaired driving. And whereas these are avoidable tragedies that leave deep holes in our families and our community. And whereas during National Impaired Driving Prevention Month, we commit ourselves to doing all we can to stop these preventable crashes and remember those who lost their lives as a result of impaired driving. And whereas we also share our appreciation for the law enforcement officers who risk their lives daily to keep our community safe while keeping impaired drivers off our roads. And whereas alcohol, drugs, and certain medications can impair judgment, decrease motor coordination, and slow reaction time to the point where operating a motor vehicle is no longer safe. Americans still make the thoughtless decision to drive impaired, threatening other motorists, cyclists, and pedestrians, killing nearly 30 people every day. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge December 2022 as National Impaired Driving Prevention Month and urges all citizens to make responsible decisions to reduce the number of crashes, injuries, and fatalities caused by impaired driving. Presented this the 21st day of November 2022 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. And as you can see, representatives from our fantastic Onslow County Sheriff's Office are going to accept the proclamation. Chairman Bright has requested Commissioner Knapp present this proclamation.
Well, first of all, I got some fine members of law enforcement standing behind me, and I want to personally thank Sheriff Miller, who I've known for I don't know how long, 30 years, and Chris, you and I definitely go back 30 years, and most of you guys. What you see up here represents the finest in what they do. And being in law enforcement, retired myself, I worked on these checkpoints with our agency, and they can be a very dangerous, dangerous situation, especially when you're checking everybody for DWIs. You get runners that tried to avoid the DWI and take off, and yet these guys have to deal with some combative people that pulled over for being DWI or DUI. And I know a couple of you guys have attested to that. They take a lot of abuse from people who are drunk or intoxicated, and they're out there every night until the wee hours of the morning. And so we need to understand that they provide a very pertinent service to our community. You know, they're out there being proactive, trying to put people who drive that are under the influence of narcotics or alcohol, whatever, they're trying to identify these people and put them in jail, and that's what they're supposed to do. Because they have no business being on the street. Countless times we hear about people who innocently have been hit by somebody who was drunk or under the influence of narcotics, and they kill innocent family members. And I've had a family member myself involved in an accident involving a drunk driver, and luckily he was not killed, but he was severely injured. And if you're going to drink, be responsible about it, and stay home, or call an Uber. It's so easy to call an Uber. You know, it's not like you have to, you know, wave down a cab. Just call an Uber. But I want to thank these guys. It's proud to present this to you, Sheriff. You guys have done a remarkable job. And I got to say something about Tommy. This came about as a grant, what is it, five years ago?
Five years.
Five years ago, they came to us as commissioners with a grant. And I know you did a lot of the grant writing, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I know Tommy, before he became in law enforcement, he's got a lot of enthusiasm, but he put this together with the help of the Sheriff's Department to get this going. And this task force funds itself, and I'm very proud of that and the fact that it's up and going. And you need to honor these men for the dedication that they perform, and congratulations, Sheriff.
Thank you Commissioners. This is very important. Fellow citizens, I think we all agree, we want Onslow County and even surrounding counties to be a good place to live, to work, and to be successful, and also to raise children. And when somebody gets impaired, whether it's with any kind of impairing substance, it's alcohol, drugs, or even prescription drugs, it can impair their judgment and their reflexes. And a lot of times when you get into a driving situation, that can cause a collision and a crash, and sometimes, most of the times, there's going to be property damage, but also damage to the individual. And I think our goal, and I'm so proud of our team here standing with me, our goal is prevention. If we can put the word out and prevent, then our job is better, because then we have a county where people are free to live and prosper and raise children in a good way without having to worry about who's going to be, you know, running into them. So I want every citizen to know, those gentlemen are out there a lot of times at nighttime keeping us safe, and please, I thank you for your support.
Thank you again Commissioners, County Manager. Sheriff Miller, this wouldn't have been possible without you, sir, undoubtedly, and Sheriff-elect Thomas for choosing to continue this on in the new administration. We appreciate that. You know, oftentimes, we talk about the numbers of impaired driving and the fatalities and the serious injuries, and they end up just being numbers on a spreadsheet that we use as to justify why we do what we do. But quickly, if I just share a quick story, that my passion was driven since I started in law enforcement, but one evening before the task force, I'm at Marine Boulevard and Western Boulevard, and there's a car traveling the wrong way down Marine Boulevard. And I had to do this traffic stop at 5:00 in the afternoon, one of the busiest times at that particular intersection, probably all day long. And as I'm talking to the driver who was revoked for an impaired driving offense, was impaired again at the same time, I look over my shoulder and I see my wife and my kids driving by. And I think that sent home the impact of the problem that we have in this county. And this was well before the DWI task force, and I stopped trying to save the world a long time ago. But if every night I can assure that my children and my family that drives on these same roadways get home safely, then I think that's a successful night. And for the folks that, the men and women that have been with the Sheriff's Office, and especially the guys on the DWI task force, these guys are out till 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 o'clock in the morning dealing with impaired drivers. And if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have the 25% reduction in impaired driving crashes that we've seen. Unfortunately, that number is, Onslow County is trending upward. So it's going to take a joint effort from all of us in the community to continue upon those successes. So thank you very much again for recognition of this problem, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
We've got two rezoning public hearings tonight, and I will turn that over to Ms. Griffin to do the public, conduct the public hearing.
Thank you Chairman Bright and Commissioners. Tonight we do have two public hearings. Our first is for case PREZ-2022-00015. It's the Rodriguez rezoning. And I now recognize Jessica Rue, our Planning and Development Director, to give a brief introduction.
Thank you. Our first rezoning this evening is a request to go from residential AM to highway business. Our applicant is Joe Rodriguez on behalf of the three property owner groups. This is for two parcels located on the north side of Old Folks Stone Road, and this is 9.27 acres. Currently, the property is primarily undeveloped. There's onwasser water and Pluris wastewater available. This is in the Turkey Creek Fire District. And this section of Old Folks Stone Road, at last count, was below traffic capacity. Our two parcels highlighted in red, they are currently zoned R.A.M. Their request again is to go to highway business. You can see by all of the blue on the screen, this is an area that is increasingly becoming more commercial. Our R.A.M. is a moderate density zoning district and also allows mobile homes. And highway businesses are more intense commercial uses. This request is supported by the comprehensive plan in our future land use map at High Density Residential and Community Growth Activity Center. It's also supported by the Sneets Ferry Community Plan, which classifies this as traditional neighborhood. This is our future land use map, with the northern parcel being high density residential, which is allowed in highway business, and the southern parcel being classified as Community Growth Activity Center. This rezoning is supported and was found to be in the public interest because the area is growing commercially and by, supported by policies 29, 34, and 38 in our land use plan. And hence, it was recommended to you unanimously on October 6th by our planning board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rue. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and we have one person who I believe is the applicant, Mr. Joe Rodriguez, who has signed up to speak. Mr. Rodriguez, if you would like to come to the microphone.
Joe Singh Rodriguez. My address is 2013 Old Regent Way in Leland, North Carolina. I wanted to thank the board, the zoning board, the staff here at Onslow County, and the residents and citizens for supporting our efforts here to get rezoned through the efforts that we've gone through with Charles Rawls. And at this point, I'm open to any questions that we may have.
Thank you, sir. If you want to take a seat on the front row, the Commissioners will be able to ask you questions in just a moment.
All right, thank you.
Yes. I'm going to make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to come up and speak specifically about the Rodriguez rezoning. Seeing none, I'll now close the public hearing and turn it over to Chairman Bright and the board for discussion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Our second public hearing is PREZ-2022-00016, the Henderson rezoning, and I'll turn it back over to Ms. Rue.
Thank you. This rezoning is to change a split zoned property on Wilmington Highway to be fully zoned highway business. It currently has two separate zoning districts. It's split between R-15 and highway business. This is for one parcel. It is 7.34 acres. Currently, this is where the indoor flea market is on the corner, and it is serviced by onwasser water. The property has an existing septic system. It is in the Verona Fire District, and our traffic counts on Wilmington Highway are in good shape. You can see here that there are two different colors representing the highway business and the R-15 zoning currently on the property. R-15, again, medium to low density, single family primarily, and highway business is a commercial district. The proposed use, again, is to go to solely highway business. This is supported by our comprehensive plan, demonstrated here at Medium Density Residential and that area-wide Commercial Activity Center, which does promote commercial uses, especially at rural intersections, as this is. This was found to be reasonable and in the public interest because it is supported by three policies in our land use plan, and it does eliminate a split zone property, which the county will always support. Again, on October 6th, the planning board recommended that you adopt this unanimously with no comments being taken on the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rue. At this time, I'll open the hearing for the Henderson rezoning. No one has signed up to speak. I will reach out if the applicant would like to come forward. And I'll make one call to the audience.
My name is Ronnie Henderson. My residence is 1481 Onslow Drive, Jacksonville. And I have 7.34 acres on 3130 Wilmington Highway. That's listed as residential. I'd like to get it changed to commercial.
Thank you so much. If you'd like to sit on the front row in case the Commissioners have a question for you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the Henderson rezoning? At this time, I'll close the public comment and turn it back over to Chairman Bright and the board.
Motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussions or questions for? Any further discussions or questions for applicant? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. We'll move on now to general items, item number six, North Carolina Parks and Recreation. I think Ms. Katie White will present that, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. You may recall earlier this year in March, the Board approved the submission of the North Carolina Parks Recreation and Trust Fund grant for improvements to be constructed at Heinz Farm Park, including an inclusive play structure, two picnic pavilion, pavilions, accessible sidewalks, and additional parking. I'm proud to stand in front of you today and let you know that Onslow County has received notice that the submitted application has been approved for the full funding. If accepted, the grant requires a 50% match from the county of $393,875. Tourism funds would be used to cover the balance of the county's match requirement. Part-of-grants are paid on a reimbursement basis and are required to be completed no later than October 31st of 2025. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the approved part-of-grant funding and authorize the Chairman to sign the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Project Agreement on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion, questions? There were some questions about the full amount, but we didn't apply for the 700. Well, if we did, we only got half of it, so we had to come up with the match. Is that what I understand that to be?
We did apply for the full 707, 787, 750 amount, and we do require the 50% match of that. So we got everything we did ask for.
So the North Carolina part-of-grants actually require the local government to give 100% of the same amount that they give the grant for. So she applied for projects that total, this total amount that she said.
That's the term, full amount was approved.
That's right. That's right. But it's like the state is paying for half of our projects now because we got this grant.
Any further? Any other questions?
The part that I want the citizens to realize is that the questions were asked by the Commissioners and answered today mostly. The application required Onslow County to be specific on how some of the funding was to be spent. Once the application was applied for and the questions were asked, we have to use that money that we say on how we're going to use it in that park. If Onslow County does not use this money, then we would lose it. And to be honest with you, after talking with the manager today, this afternoon late, I have got to support this effort. Because it's a matched funding, and it was in the application. So there's no, nobody trying to do anything. And I want the citizens to know, this is to benefit Heinz Farm and the citizens of Onslow County for future youth and their growth. And I can see this as a very positive issue. Thank you for what y'all have done.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions?
Just want to say, Katie, thank you for the great job you did. Thank you for researching it. Appreciate it.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, B, is the North Carolina Appropriation Act Grant Sheriff's Training Center. I think Sheriff Miller will be representing the sheriff's office on that.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Staff. The Onslow County Sheriff's Office was awarded, were granted for $650,000 in the North Carolina General Assembly in 2022 Appropriations Bill. The funds were awarded for capital improvements and equipment to the Sheriff's Office Training Center, which is something that we really have needed for a long time. The grant will be used to complete the training center, building, storage buildings, security systems, landscaping, parking, and other related items. And those are going to be needs and not wants. I think that's something that was needed for a long time, and we just appreciate the General Assembly for appropriating it for us. Hearing, ask you any questions? And Colonel Thomas, who was one of the main managers to make that happen, is here also, and we're available for any questions that you may have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just got a question. Who wrote the grant? Just curious.
Who always writes the grant?
What's that?
It came from Senator Lozaro, and I think Senator Lozaro needs to be given credit for that.
I would like to point out, too, that the motion needs to include that we authorize the sheriff to execute the associated documents. These documents have to be signed by the sheriff.
So moved.
Yep.
Thank you. And I'd like to ensure our citizens and the Board of Commissioners and our managers that it's only going to be used appropriately for needs and not wants.
Just one last comment. That's what I'm trying to get at. That's, ever since the last four years, whatever, however long I've been in the Sheriff's Department, you guys have always found a way to find a grant. And I commend you and the Sheriff's Department for doing that, because you're finding ways to obtain available money that is out there for us to help the taxpayers here in Onslow County save their money, just like the DWI task force. So I just want to say kudos to the Sheriff Department for your staff.
But this actually was not a grant.
Oh, it wasn't? Because I just...
It came from the General Assembly, a request.
Okay. That's even better. But thank you, though.
Have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. I think the next item is yours also.
Oh, the health plan. North Carolina General Statute 153A, 225A, requires all local governments, units that operate a jail, a detention center, have a jail medical plan. The jail medical plan must be reviewed annually and signed by the local health director, and that, in our case, was done. This annual agreement between Onslow County Sheriff, myself, and the Onslow County Health Department is the jail medical plan for fiscal year 2022, 2023. And it assures that our residents, our inmates, are providing the proper medical care. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Hearing none. Need a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks.
USDA land use, land lease, that's our county manager and our county attorney, Brett Sims, will be available to present that item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Cooperative Extension, Soil and Water, and USDA have all moved from the multipurpose complex to the government center, and we're very happy to have them. Here, they are continuing to serve our Onslow County citizens, all from the same facility, and they're enjoying a healthier, better-maintained, and larger space. The USDA, per federal guidelines, is paying $2,550.17 per month for the office space that we are leasing to them. The lease is for a term of 18 months. The National Headquarters of USDA has approved this lease that we are presenting tonight and will execute the documents pending the consideration and approval of the Board of Commissioners. For the specific action requested, I would like to change what we have written on the agenda. We actually need you to authorize me to sign the form. When we got the forms back from USDA, it does have me signing them. So it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approving the lease, and if approved, authorize the county manager to sign on behalf of the county.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Commissioners?
I would just want to thank the administration for working so hard with the state and federal government to make that happen. It was necessary, and I think it'll be good for everybody.
I think it's, I think it's an understatement, the hoops that you all had to jump through fighting the US government. We know how that works out, and then you guys stuck with it, and you found alternatives. Very appreciative of Brett and you for the hard work in getting this thing worked out, because that was slowly becoming a little bit of a thorn, but we got it worked out. But thank you.
That's right. Thank you.
Any further? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Nonrecurring state aid, public libraries, Ms. Jennifer Whaley will present that item. Some more, some more grant money.
Good evening, Chairman Bright, Vice Chairman Foster, members of the Board. In 2021, the North Carolina General Assembly allocated $10 million of the American Rescue Plan State Fiscal Recovery Funds from the US Department of the Treasury that had come to North Carolina to be distributed to public libraries that qualify for state aid to public libraries. These funds are being distributed to public libraries through the State Library of North Carolina in '22, '23 fiscal year. Funds are being distributed in one lump sum allotment. These funds do not revert back to the state at the end of the '22, '23 fiscal year. All funds, however, have to be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026. Once funds are distributed, quarterly and annual reports are due to the State Library of North Carolina. Onslow County Public Library is slated to receive $143,809 in nonrecurring state aid. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider accepting the nonrecurring state aid to public libraries application as presented, and if approved, authorize the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners and the county manager to sign the documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
Do we know how some of these monies can be used for our libraries?
Yes, sir. We are hoping to update our collection in all branches, update our circulation desk and shelving in the main branch, aesthetic updates to our main branch as well, and some other renovation projects also in the main branch building.
Okay, thank you.
Any further? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. North Carolina DHS State Certification and Authorization Forms, Ms. Susan Dickbin, Social Services Deputy Director, will present that item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. As you know, the Department of Social Services administers the Adolescent Parenting Program that is housed out of the peers' office. And it is the time of year each year that we update documents that are part of the contract. And so I am coming before you this evening, asking that in your role as the Consolidated Human Services Board, that you would agree to execute the documents that you have in your packets, which would include two documents that would give authorization to Sherri Slater as the Director over Consolidated Human Services and Assistant County Manager to execute the contract, as well as sign for monthly expenditures, and then also to execute the third document, which is the state certificate verifying that we do meet requirements as part of the agency that administers that grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or inquiries from the presenter?
Do we fund this on a reimbursement system? I mean, they...
Yes, sir.
We reimburse them for the services.
Okay. They reimburse us for...
The state reimburses us, and we reimburse peers, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item G, Service Contract with Onslow County Schools for School Health Team, Workforce. I think Ms. Chrissy Hoover, our Health Director, will present that item. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The item tonight is ARPA funds that came through the North Carolina Division of Public Health, and these funds were designated to recruit, hire, and establish, expand, and train, and sustain the public health workforce, particularly in our school system, including school nurses, other school health professionals like social workers, mental health professionals, and health educators. School health is recognized as an important component of the public health system, particularly for our school-aged population. These funds totaled $225,924. The Health Department retained $50,000 to fund a school health liaison, which works primarily with the school system, focuses on clusters and outbreaks, and the remainder of the funds, in the amount of $175,924, was written into a service agreement with the Onslow County Schools. And the specific action that we're requesting tonight is that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the service contract between the County of Onslow and the Onslow County Schools in the amount of $175,924, and authorize the county manager and Christina Russell, the purchasing division here, to execute these associated documents. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those.
Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Here a second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, Ms. Hoover. Certification of Overdue Taxes, Norm Bryson, Emergency Service Director, will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The item you have for, not for your consideration, is a document stating that Onslow County has no overdue taxes. This document is part of our emergency management, EMPG grant submittal that we put through that we use to pay for portions of our emergency management staffing that we have. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider authorizing the Board Chairman and County Managers to sign the noted overdue tax debt certification.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bryson. amended project ordinance for runway rehabilitation project, Airport Director Chris White will present this first item on that.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, and Staff. We have several, several items for you tonight, and the interest of gravity will hit the high points. The first item we have before you tonight is an amended project ordinance for the taxiway, runway, and associated airfields, pavements project. That first phase of the project, which was the taxiway, is now complete. The second phase, which involves milling and overlaying the runway and associated taxiways, will be starting up in the spring. The item is an amendment to the project ordinance that incorporates the previously-accepted FAA grant in the amount of $8,420,073. The Department of Defense, Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program grant, D SIP grant, for $2 million, and local funds of $1 million. The amended project ordinance has been reviewed and approved by finance. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the amended project finance, and if authorized, or if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the amended project ordinance.
Motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We will do one more, Chris, and then we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Okay. The next item is the Runway Rehabilitation Project Construction Award. This project is the mill and overlay of the runway. The run, the project is bid initially on August 2nd and rebid twice more due to the insufficient number of bids that were received. On September 12th, two bids were received. S T Wooton Corporation was the lowest responsive responsible bidder. Their bid was $10,440,477.88. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the construction award to S T Wooton Corporation, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the Construction Counter Act on behalf of the county.
So moved.
Have a motion? Here a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Here none, motion carries unanimously. We will take a 10-minute break, and Chris, you'll be back up when we come back. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I'd call a meeting back to order. Our next item of business is Item K. I think Mr. White will present that to us also.
Good evening again. The next item is the RSNH Construction Administration Contract, or the Work Authorization for the Runway Rehabilitation Project. In this work authorization, RSNH provides construction administration and inspection services during the runway rehabilitation project in the amount of $453,062. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve this task order for construction administration and inspection services to RSNH, and if approved authorize the Chairman to sign Task Order 1 on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Chris, next one is yours also.
Yes. Item L, the Albert Ellis Airport, what we call the NCAIP-FY23 State Allocation and Funding Agreement. In this year's state budget, invests over $100 million in North Carolina's 10 commercial service airports to be used for capital improvements and debt service. These reoccurring funds are allocated based to airports based on the number of departing passengers and their economic contribution. The 2021 study revealed, or reported, that the Albert Ellis Airport had an economic output of over $565 million a year and generates approximately $20 million in state and local taxes. Airports in North Carolina have an output of over $61 billion and represent approximately 10% of the state's GDP. The fiscal year 23 allocation for the Albert Ellis Airport is $2,462,397. These funds are paid in advance and allocated to eligible projects. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the allocation, approve the NCDOT funding agreement, and if approved authorize the Chairman to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
Motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item M, the Airport NCDOT Grant for the Aircraft Operations Tracking System.
Aircraft are equipped with a piece of equipment called an ADS-B, or known as an Automatic Dependent Surveillance Broadcast. This is used to keep aircraft aware of their location in respect to other aircraft. We also utilize this to track aircraft, identify who landed, when they landed, when they took off, and so forth. We have installed a system, and the DOT has offered to fund 50% of that. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the NCDOT Airport Flight Operations and Counting Service Agreement, and if approved authorize the Chairman to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
A motion?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item N, yours also.
Yep, one last item. In September 2021, the county received a small community air service development grant known as a SCADZI from the U.S. Department of Transportation to reimburse the airport for expenses associated with the scope of the grant. The grant project includes a minimum revenue guarantees, associated marketing, and recruitment efforts to attract and support new air service at the airport. The grant specifies that the legal sponsor that endorsed the grant, the Chairman of the Board, also sign each reimbursement request unless delegated to another person by completing the signature delegation form. For expediency, it is recommended that the County Manager Sharon Griffin be designated as the signatory for the SCADZAP grant reimbursements, and to effect this change, the current signatory, the Chairman, and the designated, or delegated, signatory, the County Manager, must both execute the authorized signature certification form. Airport and county finance staff would continue to prepare and validate the reimbursement requests prior to submitting them to the County Manager's office for signature. The specific request is, it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the signature delegation to the County Manager for reimbursements from the SCADZAP grant, and if approved authorize the Chairman and the County Manager to sign the authorized signature certification form.
Motion?
So moved.
Here a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. White?
Let me just say one thing. Just, you know, Chris, a lot of people don't understand what you do as an airport director out there and how you interact with the county, and all these grants, all these things that you come, that are part of your requirement that come from DOT and the FAA. I mean, I think it's remarkable because I got here in 1990 and the airport was nothing, to be honest with you, and then all the construction, the runway extensions and stuff like this, this airport has really taken off the leaps and bounds to, it pretty much turned into a pretty nice facility when you fly in. And I've been in and out of this airport many times, going overseas or whatever, and I've been very impressed with the progress of this airport, and, you know, hopefully I'm a proponent of getting it bigger so we can have larger aircraft or runway space as far as, you know, possible distribution centers. So I just wanted to commend you for that and for staying on top of it.
I've worked the last year, I guess it's been, on the board over there at the airport with Chris. Hats off to the work he's done, the improvements that have taken place, and the opportunities that you have brought into that airport, and the economic machine that it is for Onslow County. So we appreciate that work and the efforts you've put in there, and it's self-sustaining and taking care of itself. So we appreciate that.
I'll call for the vote in just a minute, but these last items that we've approved, and this last one now, all of the money that we have approved tonight, and we'll end up voting on this one in a minute, but that's all money that we got from grants or the Airport Enterprise Fund, which is no local tax dollars at all. Is that my understanding?
That's correct.
And it's millions of dollars, millions and millions of dollars that come into the airport, which just boosts our ability for economic development also. Any other questions for Mr. White? Here none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Stream cleanup, that'll be Ms. Joshua Thomas. Soil and water.
Good evening Commissioners. If you'll recall, on September the 7th of this year, the Board approved the grant for a stream flow rehabilitation assistance program in the amount of $377,335. This funding was to allow us to remove stream debris, cutting down leaning trees, treetops, woody vegetations that impede or could impede the water flow in our streams and tributaries. Myself, along with Purchase and Finance, had requested proposed bids from three different contractors, and we have chosen the low bidder as Alliance Integrated Solutions Incorporated, who was able to bid the project at $320,766.31. That actually allows us $56,568.69 left over to extend these projects. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider awarding this contract to Alliance Integrated Solutions Incorporated in the amount of 300, or, yeah, $320,766.31, and to authorize Chairman Bright to sign the contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Does this focus on any certain stream or creek, or is there-
So we were able to, the initial project was to clean out Back Swamp Creek. The bids came in low enough, we were actually able to include 22,000 feet of Squires Run Creek, and with the additional $56,568 that we have left over, because we have to use all the funds that are given to us, we are going to begin the process here very shortly to see if there's another area that needs the attention too.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
A lot of folks don't realize how stream cleanup is important to the county since it's such a flat land-
Yes, sir.
-area. Stream flooding from debris or from beaver causes damage to forestry, causes damage to farmland, causes damage to septic systems that water builds up on with the groundwater level, and it's just really important that we stay on top of that, and the grant money is a big bonus for us. So we really appreciate the efforts that's being put for that. Any further? Here no further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number P, Heinz Farm Improvement Project Ordinance, Andrew Prince.
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Board of Commissioners. The proposed capital project ordinance for the Heinz Farm Park Improvements Project includes revenue and sources of grant funding from the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund totaling $393,875, and an equal matching portion of Onslow County tourism funds. The total project budget for $787,750 for construction, equipment, and services. It is specifically requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the project ordinance for the Heinz Park, Heinz Farm Park Improvements, and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Prince?
I just got one. The $370, what is it? $393, you said that's out of tourism funds?
Yes, sir.
Strictly?
Yes, sir.
And it's historically been what we've done, the couple of times that we've done this through the park grants, that matches come from the tourism funds.
In this particular case, the projects that are planned are going to encourage festivals and other groups coming out to Heinz Farm Park, so we're able to use tourism funds, which of course come from folks outside the county staying in our county overnight.
So I think we did that through Richland Steed Park and Deppy Park in last.
That's correct.
Any further? Want a motion?
We already got it.
We have a motion to say any more discussion, questions? Here none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Amended Audit Contract, I think that's yours also.
Yes, sir. Onslow County received a contract amendment from our auditors, Martin Starrns &amp; Associates, related to the annual audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th of '22. According to North Carolina General Statute 15934A, amended audit contracts must be approved by our governing board. The contract is being amended to allow the audit firm additional time to complete the audit beyond the initial deadline of December 1st, 2022. This contract amendment does not result in an increase in audit fees. With this extension, the audit will be submitted before the modified due date of January 31st, 2023, and the county will be in compliance with the local government commission requirements. Having a complete and thorough audit is our primary objective. We have already put new guidelines in place to assure that the audit will be completed in a timelier fashion in fiscal year 2324. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the amended contract with Martin Starrns &amp; Associates, CPA's PA, for the fiscal year '22 audit, and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? This is not going to put us in jeopardy with LGC, is it?
No, sir, it will not.
Is this typical, or is this something that's occurred in the last couple of audits in the last couple of years?
This has been an unusual year. This is not typical, and this is not something that we normally would want to do. This gives an extension of time for our audit to be completed, but we had several different things that went on this year. We didn't have a finance officer for a while, which didn't help on our side. We're working with a new audit firm, which didn't help. They were trying to get to know us, and there were a number of regulatory changes this year that required new areas to be audited. So it's kind of a lot of things together. The majority of North Carolina local governments are doing the same thing this year because of some of these forces.
Now, the audit company that we had decided not to do the audit for us, again, from the years back, so we went, this is a new company.
That's right.
And then this new company has found some stumbling blocks or whatever, but we didn't get the audit done as we have been.
That is correct. The audit firm that we used for a number of years is no longer doing local government audits, and like many local governments, we scrambled to get a brand-new audit firm. We're trying to get used to how they do it. They do it a bit differently than the other audit firm.
So we go out on bids again next year for an audit company, or do we use the same one?
We're considering going out for bid. We've got Christina looking at that right now. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Prince, our Finance Director? Here none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Reimbursement Resolution, I think that's yours also.
Yes, sir. The reimbursement resolution for the Bear Creek Fire Station. It is standard practice to have a reimbursement resolution in place before the start of a capital project. This enables the county to recover any cost incurred dating back 60 days from the approval of the reimbursement resolution. It should be noted that the county can recover soft costs, including architecture, engineering, and legal fees dating back to the inception of the project. The county will reimburse itself once the debt is issued. The reimbursement resolution will cover the costs associated with acquisition, construction, equipping, and improving of the new Bear Creek Fire Station. It is requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the reimbursement resolution for the Bear Creek Fire Association, Fire Station, and if approved authorize the clerk to the Board to execute the reimbursement resolution on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So we basically reimbursed the general fund after we make the loan, the bond for-
That's correct. So what this is, is the Board giving permission to go to that next step, which is design, then we'll bring that back to you and hopefully move forward. What this does is it formally allows us, once we go out for limited obligation bonds using our debt capacity model, to reimburse ourselves because it's part of that project. We just haven't gone out for the bid, the loan process yet.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Reimbursement for Community Recreation Center.
As you know, it is standard practice to have a reimbursement resolution in place before the start of a capital project. This enables the county to recover any cost incurred dating back 60 days from the approval of the resolution. It should be noted that the county can recover soft costs dating back to the inception of the project. The county will reimburse itself once debt is issued. The reimbursement resolution will cover costs associated with acquisition, construction, equipping, and improving of the new Community Recreation Center. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the reimbursement resolution for the new Community Recreation Center, and if approved authorize the clerk to the Board to execute the reimbursement resolution on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item T, Reimbursement Resolution, Satellite EMS Stations.
Thank you, Commissioner. It is standard practice to have a reimbursement resolution in place before the start of- It is standard practice to have a reimbursement resolution in place before the start of a capital project. This enables the county to recover any cost incurred dating back 60 days from the approval of the reimbursement resolution. The reimbursement resolution will cover the costs associated with acquisition, construction, equipping, and improving, improving of three new satellite EMS stations. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the reimbursement resolution for the three new satellite EMS stations, and if approved, authorize the clerk to the board to execute the reimbursement resolution on behalf of the county, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I think you can go set, well, you got one more item, don't you?
Mm-hmm, I do.
Budget amendments.
The First Amendment is requested to allocate additional rental revenue related to the USDA signing a new lease that the Board approved this evening to relocate from 4024 Richland's Highway to the Government Center. The Next Amendment is requested by Senior Services to increase grant revenue and expenses due to receiving additional revenue from the granting agency. The Final Amendment is the request by the Sheriff's Office to increase revenue and expense for the newly awarded North Carolina General Assembly 2022 Appropriations Act that the Board approved this evening. The grant funds will be utilized for capital improvements to the Sheriff's Office Training Center. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the listed budget amendments, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Don't move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the budget amendments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now you can go have a seat.
Thank you.
We're, Ms. Griffin, we're at item seven, consent agenda, there was nothing moved to that item, so now we're at item number eight, which is manager's comments, so the floor is yours.
I'm going to keep it really brief, since we've had a long meeting. I just want to acknowledge on this last meeting before organizational meeting, the commitment that our commissioners have made to our community and all the time you've put in. And I wanted to recognize, and I'm getting hoarse, Commissioner Scott will be celebrating two years with us in December. Commissioner Foster will be celebrating four years with us in December, is that correct? Commissioner Price, Commissioner Knapp, and Commissioner Bennett have given us six years of their lives, and we appreciate it. Chairman Bright will be with us 15 years in December as a commissioner, and Commissioner Buchanan has given us 18 years of his life as a county commissioner. And I just want to say how much we appreciate you. Most people don't realize how much goes into this and how much you have to endure, and we appreciate you being leaders in our community. And that's all I have for this evening.
That it? Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner comments, and I don't know where we started at last time, but I guess we'll start with Royce on that side there, we'll jump to my left. Royce, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be quick too, but I did want to mention that the Salvation Army has started ringing bells last weekend. You'll see them at a lot of the retail stores. Salvation Army helps a lot of people in Onslow County, so we appreciate you dropping your bills or your change in those buckets when you walk by. I also want to mention that Jackson-Lonslow Economic Development Partnership received a $100,000 grant from the Truist Foundation for a Community Business Loan Fund. We've started a fund that will help to, to support startup and expanding small businesses in Onslow County. It'll be money that we can loan, and when it's paid back, we'll loan it out again. Also received a $25,000 grant from Duke Energy for Economic Development and Workforce Initiatives. So we thank what Jackson-Lonslow Economic Development Partnership is doing to promote Onslow County. Thank you, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Scott?
You know, the Onslow County Sheriff's and what a Sheriff's Office and their DWI Task Force, and Commissioner Knapp done a wonderful job tonight, but I tell you what, I took the time to walk out to the DWI Task Force bus, and Mark, the driver, was sitting there just talking with me. The DWI Task Force last year in 2021 took 422 DWIs off the roads of Onslow County last year with our DWI Task Force. That's a heck of an accomplishment for nine people within the Sheriff's Office. And my hat goes, and that goes off to you guys, because y'all really do, you really do represent the people of Onslow County, and I want to thank you. I want to thank Hans Miller, the Sheriff, for what he's done for this county for the last eight, more than eight years. There's a lot going on in this county. May not agree with everything that we do up here on this board, but I can tell you right here, there's one commissioner that I can only speak for myself. I take this extremely serious. I try to spend your taxpayers' dollars to where they're supposed to be spent. We've got a lot of hard-working people in this county, and as long as I, as I'm sitting in your chair, I'm going to support this county in whatever it needs to be doing. And I thank you for the privilege to serve, and good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. I keep myself pretty brief. I want to thank our veterans and the DWI Task Force and the people that adopt our children out. It's amazing what they do for us, and thank you, and have a nice, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Commissioner Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is one of your big summations for one of your last coming-up meetings. I think we've got one more brief meeting, but Mark, thank you for being a commissioner, and I'll leave it now for your comments.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, this is my last meeting where I'll play an active role, so I wanted to begin by thanking this board for allowing me to represent you at the Legislative Goals Conference last week. I always enjoy that immensely, is being able to talk issues and, and discuss various problems that face the state and the 100 counties across North Carolina. The three top priority goals that emerged from the NCAACC, one was the same, the top was, number one was the same one as last year, was increasing broadband availability. Let me bring it up here so I can read it. I did have it up and the computer blanked out like you always do. Here we go. Seek legislation, funding, and other efforts to expand digital infrastructure and broadband capability to the unserved and underserved areas of the state. So that, I think that was the number one goal last year as well. Seek additional revenue sources to address statewide public school and community college capital needs and ensure methods to use to distribute school capital funding considers the needs of both low wealth and growing counties. Revisions to the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund will allow for more access to counties and allow for faster school construction and to allow, to allow, to include allowing projects that have not previously been awarded a grant to commence and remain eligible for future grant application periods. The third goal, usually we have five that, but they could only agree on three, and I're prioritizing this year. Support expansion of Medicaid as well as related funding and operational flexibility for counties to expand county workforce and necessary infrastructure. So we passed about 50 goals that the lobbyists that work for NCAACC will, will work up in Raleigh in the state Capitol to try to lobby the state legislature for all, on behalf of all 100 counties. Just a few broader comments relating to my time on the board. It's been a great honor and privilege to serve Onslow County citizens over the past six years. I've enjoyed it, every minute of it. I've given it my all, poured everything I have into it. I know that I probably made mistakes along the way, but I hope the people will attribute these mistakes to my head, but, and not my heart. My goal was always to vote and represent the interest of the average guy, because that's what I am, just an average guy, not born with a silver spoon in his mouth, and vote according to my principles. I've strived to serve with integrity and practiced the ability to move on to the next issue if a vote didn't go my way. I think that's one of the most important things that a commissioner needs to be able to have the ability to do, that if things don't turn out the way you want to, you can let it go, you can pick up the next one and keep pressing on. So, along the way, I'd like to thank Sharon for all she's done. She's done a great job for the people of Onslow County and for this board, working on our behalf. The office staff, Julie makes everything run with, along with Courtney and Angie. They make it pretty easy on us, and all the staff. I usually don't give out a lot of praise to individuals, and that's another, probably one of my weaknesses, but I'm not smart enough to be anybody but who I am. But I'd like to thank all the staff and, and me, all the people that work for Onslow County do a great job, day in and day out, and for, on the behalf of the people. Thank the Chairman, who's done a great job, always calls every member, tries to provide feedback to all of us about what's going on, and for these board members as well. I think by and large, we've had a great working relationship. We've been able to interact, and we didn't always agree on things, but that was okay too. Kind of gave it a little spice maybe. And then to the citizens of Onslow County, thanks for your support. This is one of the greatest honors of my life, is whenever I was elected in 2016, and I appreciate the privilege to have served. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Knapp?
If I had to piggyback on what Mark said, I want to thank Mark for his friendship and for his times that we've had discussions on the phone discussing things, and one thing he said that stuck, stuck out was that, you know, he voted his conscience, he would vote one way, we disagree, we openly debated the issue here in, on the Board of Commissioners, but whatever, however the vote went, it was over. You know, he, he was a team player, you know, he went with the board, you have to go with the majority of the board, and that's what people don't understand. You know, we're all individuals here, we all have our opinions, we all have our thought process and what we feel is right, and we vote, but whatever the majority of the board votes, that's it, that's a decision, and we have to go with the majority, and, and I've been there too, where I've been the minority in a vote and the board continued on, just like you have. But the thing about Mark was that he could, he could put that aside, he could put that aside, he got along with everybody on the board, and no matter what the decision, he worked with us, and he kept voicing his opinion, which I, I really appreciate very much, Mark. I appreciate your friendship more than anything, and I have the utmost respect for you. The next thing I'm going to say, you might not think I have respect for you, but you know, as we sit here on the board, we are, we joke with each other with Tim Foster, myself, and Mark all through the year, and this, this week, since you guys got me last time, I told you that Georgia Tech was going to give North Carolina a problem, and they lost. So, Tim, you've lost. And I also said that Louisville was going to give NC State a problem, and they lost. However, my alma mater didn't lose, and they won 49 to 17, and now they're ranked, and UNC and NC State is not ranked. Imagine that. So, this is rival week for us here in NCAA football country. You've got NC State and UNC this weekend, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not even putting money on that one. And of course, my Florida State Seminoles, we play the Florida Gators in Tallahassee, and it's going to be an interesting time, but I had to throw that in there, because I know that right after the parade, you know, you're looking at me, says, "I got to get", and I said, "Where are you going?", he says, "I'm going to UNC to watch the game", and I said, "Oh, boy, it's going to be a long trip home for you." Was it, Tim?
It was.
But anyway, last thing is, two things, want to thank the Task Force that were here, they do a fantastic job, and it's, it's Monday, folks, and we've got holiday coming up, Thanksgiving. Please be careful where you're out there when you're visiting your families. You know, if you decide to drink or, or take in any alcoholic beverages, be smart, get an Uber, have a friend drive you home or whatever it might be, but just be safe and enjoy your family. And to enjoy your family means everybody in your family, to include your pets. Enjoy your pets very much. I just lost my pet yesterday of 15 years, and it was, it was pretty, pretty hard. But just have a good time, God bless, and hopefully we'll see you in December for the next meeting safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. It's always good to know that you get to go after someone that talks junk to you. But it was a long trip back home from Chapel Hill Saturday night. Florida State is ranked, Carolina is not. Carolina is playing on December 3rd in the ACC Championship. Florida State will get the weekend off, so we have to let that be known as well. Thank you, Commissioner Price, for your, your lifetime of service to Onslow County. Had the opportunity to work with Mark at Southwest High School as his colleague, peer next door to him in the classroom, and then years later as his assistant principal, and then his principal, so I know what his heart is and his dedication to citizens and kids and the community, and it's been a lifetime of, of service. And you have a servant's heart, and we appreciate what you've done in Onslow County throughout the years. Also, I have to thank Sheriff Miller for his dedication to Onslow County. Those of you that don't know, I have known Sheriff Miller for almost 34 years, because it was 34 years ago this coming month that I walked into his house when he was Captain Miller and took his daughter out on our first date, and she and I have been married for 32 years now, and it's a, a, a great relationship I have with my father-in-law. So yes, Sheriff Miller, for those of you who don't know, is my father-in-law, and he has had a heart of service as well, from his years in the Marine Corps, to his time with the State Bureau of Investigation, to his time as the chief out at the airport, and then his eight years here as sheriff for Onslow County. So the man has contributed a lot of his life and dedication and service, not only to this great nation, but to Onslow County as well, and I appreciate what he has done and the, the role model he has made for my two boys of what service and dedication to community and country is all about, as well as God and family. So a big thank you to that. Thank you to everybody else, thank you to all our veterans, we didn't have a chance to do that, we're not having a meeting, and we appreciate all that you do in Onslow County is the heart of veterans and what veterans mean to a community, and we appreciate all that they do here in Onslow County. And thanks to everybody else here that works for this county, we appreciate what you've done. I look forward to serving you for the next four years, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Well, a lot has been said that I was going to say, but I would say that November is Veterans Appreciation Month, and if you go by my house, won't be going by the night because I hadn't been home, but you go by my house, you'll see that green light in the window. And that green light, we're asking people to put in or put out to recognize our veterans and honor our veterans for this month. As you've seen on tonight's agenda, we had a ton of stuff concerning grants and money that we got that's not local tax money, millions and millions of dollars that we get, and we got smart enough people to apply for them and smart enough people to get money that we can do things with that we don't have to burden the property owners on, because it's getting harder and harder to do things now because of the economy. And you can tell that by going to the grocery store or maybe to the gas station, but gas prices up and down, right now they're going down a little bit, but they have been up. Don't know what the future is for that, but everything is energy-related. Our building costs, when we do buildings, we have to put a cushion in there to try to make up for, you know, added costs for construction, and everybody that's in the building business tell me that they can build a building two years ago like 20% less than what it costs to build one now, so that, that material stuff may be coming down some, but it's not coming down like it's going to be a big impact. So, other than that, it's been said already, if you're traveling for this holiday season, be careful on the road. There's a lot of people that's crazy on the road, might be me, but still be careful in your travels and watch out for the other person. Other than that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.